I'm not used to that. I'm very sorry. All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, the Lander County Commission meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin Board of Highway Commission for the March 12th. All right, so can Brian, will you go ahead and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we can go ahead and have a moment of silence, please? All right, so we are going to go ahead and take a quick break for a litigation meeting. All right, so we're going to leave, you guys can stay, and we'll be back shortly. All righty, we are going to call the meeting back to order and move on. So, says Lander County Commission may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order and may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled and removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners' reports and meeting conferences and seminars attended. Let's start with Patsy.
Okay, thank you. On March 9th, I did have the airport board meeting in Austin. We had a full board, and there was a couple of things that we commented on. Of course, we're getting ready for budget naturally. But we have the military vehicles that are actually staged, the old military vehicles that are staged out at the airport. One's even a Russian tank, and one's from Iraq. So we had asked to have them identified, because they really are neat. So we're working on that, so we can identify the vehicles. And it's, they're actually staged there for the military exercises. But they're so interesting, we wanted them identified for us, so that people coming would know exactly what they are, since they have quite a history. Actually, our bids will be opening the end of next month for our taxi lane and the parking. For the road, we're going to be doing all that asphalt paving coming in from 722 all the way in to the airport. So that'll be the end of next month, end of April. And the Nevada Airports Association Conference is coming up in Tonopah. We actually have an FAA collaboration meeting every time, and I think our county manager is planning on going. But a couple of us are also going to attend just for the FAA coordination, not for the whole day, the couple days conference, but just to actually meet with FAA. It's always nice to have, have more people there, because it shows the interest, instead of just your airport engineers doing everything. Shows the interest of the county and how much we care about the airport. So they've always encouraged us to do that, and I've done two or three of them now. So Tom Anderson is going to go with me, and we're going to run on down for just that meeting with FAA. On the 11th, actually, we did have, that was yesterday, gee, it seems so long ago when I say that. Our search committee for our education coordinator from Cooperative Extension had a meeting. We went through additional applications that were in, and we haven't narrowed them down to three again. And so we will be looking at those. The interview process actually starts after the search committee selects the three, then the university interviews them, and then of those, hopefully, we have, we'll have a couple that we can do personal interviews with and then bring over to Battle Mountain to do those. So that's, that's a good thing. They asked if we wanted to go back out to get more applications, and the committee was very unified on, no, we've been without our education coordinator, we think we've got some good ones, hopefully, they won't pull outlets, go for it. So that's where we are, and it's kind of exciting to finally get that rolling on. Just a quick comment, the Saturday, on the 14th, is Kingston St. Patrick's Day Party, and they do their fundraiser for the fire department every year. And a lot of people from Battle Mountain do, well, not a lot, but many from Battle Mountain do attend the different Kingston events. So I wanted to let you all know that was on, on the agenda for this Saturday night. And that's all I have, thank you. It starts at 5:00.
All right, Art.
I could talk for a long time, but I'm just going to hit on, on the highlights from DC. It was a lot of work. The first morning, I was in grazing, and I ran between grazing and justice and public safety, because both of the, both of the committees had good stuff that I needed to check into. As I got information on grazing, I sent it back to Paul, or Paul Tamara. He got it, he sent me some things via text, and I got those right to our guy in the Department of Interior. We made a good contact there. One of the questions with grazing was, what effect does restoration have? Because more and more, we're finding out that the restoration really, really doesn't help after the grazing, that the grazing just takes care of itself. There was a plea from a California representative to create more wilderness areas. That was pretty much beat down. It didn't, it didn't get to a resolution. People from California also wanted some type of a resolution regulating methane on the ranches and the farms. That didn't go in, in the, in the Western Committee, but it did get to the Economic Committee, and the only reason it didn't get passed was seven votes out of like 50 people. So we need to keep our eye on those kinds of things, put the ranchers out of business. A problem in Wyoming with land trust and family trust is interfering with the BLM and some things that local people would like to do with their lands on trade-off for BLM. So I don't know if we have that, that issue in, in Nevada. In the, now, jumping to the, the public safety, there was a big plea for a civil justice program in counties. A civil justice program is a board of people that get together and kind of oversee the sheriff's office and the justice courts, and are they being fair? Because what you hear is less bail, less bond, and lower sentences for people that wind up in court. On two, on two occasions, there was discussion about helping county jails with the mentally ill. I talked to a commissioner from New Mexico, and it was kind of interesting, because he was faced with keeping a juvenile facility open that cost a million dollars a year, and they really didn't have any juveniles in the facility. So when he came in, he closed it. They couldn't afford it. And a terrible thing happened, they wound up getting a mentally ill juvenile, and they put him in jail, and he wound up hanging himself. So now they're faced with, do we spend a million dollars a year and take a chance? Or what are the, what are the, the options? During President Trump's speech, he was, he said wow to the reaction from, when he said, we're going to come in federally, and we're going to help our county jails with mental illness. There was a standing ovation, and he was put back by that. He didn't realize what a big issue this is. We've heard it from Ron, and now we're hearing it pretty much nation, nationwide. So there is, there is going to be some improvements there. One, one number that kept coming up was 1.3 or 1.4 billion dollars, and 180,000 to 7 million jobs have been created by deregulation. The Trump administration made it very clear that they do support the ranchers, they do support the farmers, and President Trump said he loves rural America, and he's going to do everything he can for family businesses in those areas. I met with, had breakfast with Senator or Representative Amade, and I did get two things right to him, and his assistants wrote it down. Number one was the policies and the procedures that BLM and Forest Service use on fires. It was the Rooster comb fire that we, the Rooster comb fire was contained on the east side of Rock Creek Road. BLM and Forest Service came, they have to follow their procedures. They started backfire, they caught the wind, and it took off. And we lost, I think, over 300,000 acres. So that got to them. The other thing that got to them were concerns about grazing with the ranchers and regulatory predictability. The Trump administration, if they keep a regulation or they create a regulation, it's going to be predictable, so that in the beginning of the grazing season, the ranchers will know exactly what the expectations are. That's, oh, they want to increase the number of AUMs to 1.5 million. That was another thing that came up. So in short, the Trump deregulation has helped the economy a whole lot. Two, four, seven, seven roads, we have over 370,000 roads, 14,000 miles, and Trump's working on keeping those open. So that's pretty much.
All right, normally, I would have had the hospital board meeting to go to, but because of conflict, they rescheduled it to the 18th. So there were no other meetings that I attended. This weekend also, Saturday, there is, the St. John Bosco is going to have their spaghetti feed as well. The one, the couple of things that are nice about that is that we have a Mr. Quintana, who is a local kid, who's going to be playing acoustic guitar there for the, for the people, and anybody who knows him, it's, to support him is, would be great. And the Basque dancers will also be attending that. So short of that, I, that's all I have this time.
So I also attended the NACO Legislative Conference in DC. Couple of things, I'm trying to make notes. I was actually trying to print this out, and I don't have any ink. So I did go to, one of the workshops was preparing vulnerable populations for disaster, a meeting of the Resilient Counties Advisory Board. Well, I sit on the, the LEPSE board, and I thought that would kind of address issues regarding LEPSE. But actually, not so much. It dealt a lot. We had a speaker from Palm Beach, Florida, and another speaker from California. So it really didn't apply weather-wise, or no, I'm sorry, it was Minnesota, weather-wise to Battle Mountain, because we don't have tornadoes here. But one of their major concerns was, how do you address the elderly? How do you deal with, with that? And one of the comments made, and I thought was really interesting, was by 2035, elderly Americans will outnumber children 18 and younger for the first time in our history. So we're, we're getting older, and it's something really to consider. Like I said, this was not the disaster scenario I was picturing for Lander County, but it did open my eyes to that, that, you know, maybe as a, a county, we need to look at, at our elderly population, what it's becoming, and prepare for that in a sense of, you know, emergency. And especially now considering, you know, with the, with the coronavirus and whatnot, if, if there was an outbreak here, is how do you deal with, with the elderly to make them safe? So that was an interesting one. Another one I did attend was the Public Land Steering Committee. And they, they did pass quite a few resolutions. And the process for that is, these resolutions get passed, and then, from my understanding is, the meeting in, in the conference in July, they come back for the entire board to vote on them, to then pass them on for legislative session next year for their lobbying, to, to try to get our representatives and whatnot to put these into bills. So a couple of them that I highlighted, one of them was a, a resolution that NACO supports the prohibition of new wilderness designation without the approval of the impacted county's governing body or the county of jurisdiction. So basically, that was pretty much an overall consensus with the steering committee, is they don't want any new wilderness areas. And, and if they are proposed, then that county needs, has the input towards that. Also, there was another resolution supporting net increase in public land ownership without the approval of the impacted counties or the counties of jurisdiction governing bodies. So I think, like Art mentioned, Wyoming, they've got a lot of land trusts, and you've got these conservation easements. People, you know, donate this land after they pass away. Then it becomes public property, and the government will shut it down. Well, we're losing that tax base when that happens. You know, you donate your land to the government, we lose the taxes on it, unless we're compensated through PILT. And that's another issue that they do have a resolution to basically fund PILT permanently. So every year, it gets brought up, is are we going to get any PILT money? So that's another resolution to make sure that, you know, it's a guaranteed. So let's see, I'm trying to, I'm sorry about that. Like I said, I, I didn't get this printed out. They did have a resolution on the, on the NEPA, that one's quite kind of long and detailed. I think that's kind of, like I said, made these notes of whatnot, the ones that really might affect Nevada and Lander County. So, so that was that. Tuesday, I had a LEPSE meeting, and we had a discussion regarding a presentation by Far West Engineering. Jessica Dugan is working on a tri-county hazard mitigation plan. It was actually kind of interesting, because she's asked all sorts of different agencies within Lander County for a hazard profiling workshop. And it lists all the potential hazards, you know, some of them avalanche, earthquakes, et cetera. And you rate those probability, frequency, et cetera. And then she's going to get these all back and compile them up for a score. And this tri-county hazard mitigation is with Persian County, Humboldt, and Lander. And to combine all the information with these three counties to help recognize where our needs as a county are within these, this area. So I do have some more of these, if anybody's interested in, in doing one of these worksheets, just get ahold of me, it's, it's actually kind of interesting. So that was it, kind of a quiet meeting, so.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks.
So then we're going to go on to the staff reports on meetings, conferences, seminars, attended.
So last week, Kyla and I were in Washington DC as well. We weren't there for the NACO conference. We were there to promote and justify our lands bill. We met with Senator Horford's staff, who's, is on the Natural Resources Committee. We met with Senator Cortez Masto. We met with Senator Rosen twice, and her staff as well. We also met with Congressman Amade, we had a real busy week. We explained the lands bill, the thought process behind it, where we would like to take it in the future, and how it benefits Lander County. Our golf course, our human-powered racetrack, the, the parcels of land that we want, why we want them, and how it benefits Lander County. They were all completely in support of this bill. And my understanding is that bill is going to be, be introduced into the House by Senator Rosen very, very soon. Soon as I get the official word that it's been introduced, I will send out an email and let you know that it's been introduced. Once it's introduced, it has to go through several processes, but we're hoping sometime end of the summer, fall time, that it goes on to President Trump's desk, and he signs it into law, and we receive that, those properties, those lands. Monday, I attended the Department of Taxation's SCCRT meeting. We were up to lose our SCCRT waiver again. They granted it, we have it for another year. However, next year, every year gets a little more specific on what they want. Next year, something to keep in the back of, of our minds, especially with budgets coming up. They want to know how Lander County is starting to diversify and not be so dependent on mines, because that's our main source of revenue, is the mines. That's what generally puts us over, is that, which we're very appreciative, the county's very appreciative of it. But they want to know how we're going to get away from that. So, but that's a budget, budget issue for future projects. Tuesday, I met with our community health nurse, the hospital CEO and his staff, the superintendent, staff from the school, to discuss the coronavirus and what we're doing in order to prepare for that. Our community health nurse has a real good plan in place, as, as well, as well as the hospital and the school district of what we're going to do. Our target number, I believe, is five. If we hit five, or once we get one, I'm probably going to ask the chair if we can call a health board meeting for it to be discussed, which the health board consists of this commission, the sheriff, and the community health nurse. But we, I want to make sure that if any questions come to you, or anybody comes to you with questions on it, that we are on top of this, the county's on top of this, we're working in conjunction with the school district and the hospital, as well as the state, state health. I did receive a, a letter of resignation from Marshall Forgeron off the Convention in Tourism. I've already spoken with Sadie, and we are going to, she's going to get that advertised as soon as we can, and we'll get that position filled, hopefully, in short order. I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. For public comment, for non-agendized items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attended to make comments on any non-agendized item at the board meeting, if, if any, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comments may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. All right, so we're going to move on to the consent items? Oh, I'm sorry, any public comment, good grief, I'm sorry. He's just going to jump right over you, I'm sorry. Good morning.
Turn that on, push the button in front. Yes.
Turn green.
Okay. I just want to thank everybody responsible for putting that fence up around that cemetery. That was a good deal. But that's not it. It looks nice, it'd be there another hundred years.
Would you give us your name for the record for us?
Oh, my name's Lenny Shepherd. And anyway, I have a problem with a road out there. It's not just me, it's a public deal. That 1900 Frontage Road was paved, it got tore up by construction hauling stuff out there, that's commercial zoned or industrial or whatever. And they tore it up, and they went back and repaved it. And the pavement's good, about six tenths of a mile, but there's no shoulders on it. And there's people riding bicycles, there's semis, there's county trucks, there's school buses. And if anybody's coming, and there's somebody nature seeker out there, or whatever, you can't get off the road. If you do, you're going to wreck your car, tear it up, or tip it over. So it needs some shoulders put on the road. I, I've asked before, and nobody seems to have time to do it. But it's a safety hazard, and if somebody gets in a wreck and gets hurt, everybody knows now. So that's it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny.
That's six tenths of a mile. It shouldn't take, I run a blade a little bit, and it's probably a two-day job. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lenny. Duly noted.
Let me turn that off.
Need more public comment? All right, moving on to consent items. All matters listed under the consent agenda item are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed, acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. All right, starting with number one, approval of the March 12th, 2020 agenda notice. Number two, approval of November 7th, 2019, meeting minutes. Approval, number three, approval of November 25th, 2019, special meeting minutes. Number four, approval of December 5th, 2019, meeting minutes. Number five, approval of December 19th, 2019, meeting minutes. Number six, approval of January 9th, 2020, meeting minutes. Number seven, approval of January 23rd, 2020, meeting minutes. Number eight, approval of February 13th, 2020, meeting minutes. Number nine, approval of February 27th, 2020, meeting minutes. Number 10, approval of the payments of bills. 11, approval of payroll change requests. So we're going to pull out number one, number three, number four, number five, number six, number seven, number nine. And under number 11, we need to pull out check number 206937.
That'd be under number 10.
Oh, it's always, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Under number 10, I have it written in the wrong spot, I'm sorry. Under 10. Check number 206937, check for Brian Sparks, 207027, for Brian's employer, excuse me. Then for D.D., check number 207015. So do we have a motion for all, all the other items that haven't been removed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Number 11?
Yes. Approval, yeah, approval of the payroll change request?
Do you have any in your book?
I didn't see, no.
Then we need to pull it.
Yes, that's what I was saying, I thought I said it, to pull that one.
Okay, no, I was confused with the 10 and 11.
Because I screwed up number 10, I'm sorry. So yeah, so that we'll be pulling.
Okay, let me make a motion then, on the consent agenda that we approved, number two, November 7th, meeting minutes, and number eight, approval of February 13th, meeting minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So then.
Okay, then I'll go back to number one, which is the agenda notice, and I would like to pull number five. That's under the recorder, and I make a motion that we approve the March 12th agenda notice as amended.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So then we have the approval of the check number 206937, and 207027.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Who have a second?
I'll second.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Abstain?
I abstain. They're made to my employer.
Alright, very good. So now we're gonna go on to check number two zero seven.
You need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, guys. All in favor? I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstain?
I abstain.
Very good. Moving on, I'm sorry. So going on to the check number two zero seven zero one five.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second?
I'll second.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll abstain because it's from me.
Alright, very good.
And I'll make a motion that we approve the balance of the payment of bills.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not.
Any opposed? Alright, very good. Alright, going on to number one, county manager, for possible action to approve, disapprove the syringe exchange and peer-supported treatment and recovery service to be placed at the health nurses' building. Good morning. State your name, please.
Good morning, uh Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh my name is Jessica Johnson. I'm a senior health educator at the Southern Nevada Health District.
My name is Chelsea Cheatham and I'm the manager of Track B Exchange, a harm reduction center in Clark County.
I'm just gonna get our uh presentation pulled up briefly and then um you wanna start?
Yes. So I am going to start by talking about the peer-supported treatment and recovery services first. So those services are funded under the State of Nevada's opioid response grant, which is something that we um received funding for last year. And that grant has allowed us to travel throughout the state of Nevada to um set up and coordinate peer-supported treatment services. So we came to Lander County a few weeks ago and spoke with the um public health nurse about the idea of having someone with lived experience with substance use um hired in the community, so it'd be someone from the community, that is in long-term recovery, that could work with other people that are um currently using substances to get them into treatment and get them into recovery. So this is something that would be available to people that may present at the hospital. So if someone overdoses at the hospital, this person could go there and talk to them and work with them there to get them into into treatment so that you can lessen the amount of people that are um seen in the hospitals more than one time, as well as they could work with other agencies in town that may be working with people that are currently using substances. It's um a program that has worked out really well um in other areas of the state currently. We're working in Elko as well as Clark County and we've actually gotten some people um into treatment in Elko County. Um I think we've gotten four at this time and in Clark County, we've gotten about thirty-six in the last few months.
So um thanks, Chelsea. One of the other uh uh services that appear in this community might work towards are additional harm reduction services um through the a public health vending project that we'll share just a little bit more uh with this group about uh today. Um so you're uh maybe wondering why someone from the Southern Nevada Health District gets the pleasure to come to Lander County. I'm very excited to be here. Uh this is a project that is in partnership with the Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health HIV Prevention Program. And due to their staffing and limitations, um they have sort of granted at SNHD to be able to come and present this to other rural communities. So um and we work in partnership with uh Track B Exchange as they do have statewide reach for all of these pieces. So um that is definitely a question we've received at other uh presentations. So I like to be really upfront about um where that is at. So this um is just briefly uh what Chelsea and I would like to share with you all today and then would absolutely love to take some questions um and learn a little bit more about um uh your thoughts and additional questions. Uh is is anyone on the commission familiar with uh Scott County, Indiana? Have you heard of that community before? Uh so in uh two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, uh Scott County, Indiana, which is a rural community, um a s- a couple of hours' drive outside of um Indianapolis, um it made international news when uh they, public health officials discovered an HIV outbreak in their very rural community. So um in Scott County, they had a disease investigator observe that they went from maybe one um HIV positive case every year or so to a cluster of five that then turned into a cluster of over two hundred cases of um HIV infection within the community in a couple of months. And uh of those cases, nearly ninety-five percent of them were co-infected um with hepatitis C as well. So um so when all of this came to light, um the the community, uh then uh their Board of Health was then superseded by the State Board of Health, which then called in the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention to help mitigate this outbreak, not unlike what we're maybe seeing with coronavirus in some locations at this time. But um when the Centers for Disease Control came in and began to interview folks, what they found um was that the epicenter of this outbreak was due primarily to um uh sharing needles due to injection drug use. So the the disease was spread as a bloodborne pathogen, um that individuals in that community um were injecting uh the pill Opana, which has since been banned from the market um at that time. Uh it was expensive, so they were sharing not only um the substance itself, but in Indiana at the time, uh syringe exchange programs uh were illegal. And so um they were also sharing syringes um as part of that outbreak. So I I share this with you because at the time, the the impact of of the substance use epidemic and um and the connection with bloodborne pathogens was not on the radar of of any uh federal officials. So um so the so Indiana then took action. Um the governor at the time uh was then Governor Mike Pence, declared a state of emergency, authorized syringe exchange, authorized many other testing, treatment, linkage to care, evidence-based pieces, and they were able to turn the tide um on that outbreak um with with those emergency plans in place. The Scott County, Indiana is obviously kind of a cautionary tale um to to many communities and um and allowing some swift action uh to help stem the outbreak and to have some plans in place could have prevented a lot of these infections from going forward. So once the CDC um was working with Scott County, Indiana, they they said, okay, what other communities across the United States might be vulnerable to an outbreak like the one that was seen in Scott County, Indiana? So they pulled together some analyses and in two thousand and sixteen, they re- released the AMFAR report, um which is available online at opioidamfar.org. Um and they identified two hundred and twenty communities that were at risk of experiencing an outbreak of HIV or and or hepatitis C among people who inject drugs um across the nation. And two communities were identified in Nevada, two counties. That was Esmeralda County and Story County, Nevada. So um so uh when this report came out, uh the state received the information uh and I'm happy to share these slides after today if that would be helpful for the commissioners. Um the state received this information and began to to reach out to these communities to say, is this, is this something you're seeing in your community? Are you seeing overdoses um from drugs? Are you seeing other um issues in your community that we can provide some resources to help address? And in our additional conversations with CDC and looking from a epidemiologic perspective, uh the data um across the state and throughout Clark County, what we realized is that um although these two communities were identified by this report, what what um the data shows is that we have sort of what they call a jurisdictional risk. So we applied for what's called a determination of need to be able to use our CDC HIV prevention dollars to combat infectious disease through either syringe services programs, increased access to testing, or other types of um of information that would allow us to be able to take action. So while these communities were additionally identified from that two thousand and sixteen report, when they went back statistically, we did receive the jurisdictional determination for the entire state to be able to take action for what local communities are seeing um and accessing. So this map really shows the overlay of those um communities that are in pink and then the communities um in green. So sometimes it's a whole state, sometimes it's an area of a state um that uh based on just numbers alone, uh were able to determine uh that they might be at risk for HIV or hepatitis C outbreak. Not a current outbreak, but at risk for an outbreak. So really looking to put some plans in place. This um epidemic that we're seeing is uh linked to uh what many of you have probably um either heard about over the last couple of years, maybe personally um experienced in in your community or other communities about um the opioid overdose, drug overdose deaths um that we're seeing nationwide. So I shared this map with you um because it doesn't a hundred percent uh overlay with the other one, but there is a strong correlation between the uh um the HIV hepatitis outbreaks that are being seen across communities and the number of drug overdose deaths. They are interconnected. Um the word that epidemiologists use is syndemic, so they're sort of happening at the same time. And in this list, although um our surveillance systems, which could be a whole other presentation about how they're outdated and take a while to get the information, you can see from two thousand and seventeen, Nevada does top the list. So Chelsea and I have shared this information with uh many other rural communities across the state just um just uh as like an FYI, but also some additional programming that might be considered to what rural communities could do. Um uh rural communities across the United States are looking at ways to increase access to HIV and hepatitis C testing. Um I'm aware in Battle Mountain that that's offered through the county health nurse, that someone could could receive a test for HIV. Um naloxone training and distribution. Naloxone is the opioid overdose reversal medication um that's also available through uh the county health nurse if an individual would like to obtain a naloxone. Um as part of Senate Bill uh four fifty-nine in two thousand and fifteen, you no longer need a prescription. Uh is the prescription's not required to receive naloxone. They do a brief training usually and then um hand out uh the medication.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
In Clark, in Clark County, are they utilizing that drug?
Yes.
Frequently? I mean, the statistics on, an idea of the statistics on what they're using, utilizing that drug.
Do you have um, so I know, do I have the updated numbers?
Or a brief idea. I mean, I don't wanna pinpoint, I'm sorry. I'm just curious, just cause I've kind of followed that, the u- the utilization.
Utilization of naloxone, yes. So as of about a year ago, um so Clark County receives um separate funding from what the rest of the state does, but I can speak specifically about our funding in Clark County. As of about a year ago, we had trained uh over seventeen hundred people and distributed over six thousand three hundred doses of naloxone throughout the community, but that included sort of regional southern communities as well. So if.
Still, that's a lot.
Yes. So if um so if Nye County or other communities in the state wasn't able to do that training, then we fulfilled that.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
In partnership, absolutely. Um so uh so nal- naloxone uh training and distribution, that's also something that Track B does as part of their services. Um and then increasing access to harm reduction services across communities is something that rural communities could look at. So we'll share just a little bit more about what those might look like um and uh and uh for your consideration and discussion. Um so harm reduction, if you've not heard of it before, um is a range of public health policies designed to lessen uh the negative social or physical consequences associated with various human behaviors. Oftentimes, when people think of harm reduction, um they immediately think of syringes, but I would encourage um anyone here to think broadly about the um the high-risk activities that we do kind of every day in our lives that we use harm reduction strategies for. So those include um seatbelt use. So driving used to be the number one cause of death in the United States prior to drug overdose um uh to overtaking um sometime in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. So driving in and of itself is a high-risk behavior. I assume many of you came here today in a vehicle. So we still engage in that, but we take a lot of protective measures. So seatbelts would be a great example of of a harm reduction strategy to help reduce um the risk of death from a high-risk behavior. Um sunscreen, uh skin cancer, uh you know, leads the nation, uh as well as one of the top ten leading causes of death, cancer in general. So um uh sunscreen, life jackets, and and uh across the nation, drowning is the number one cause of death for young children. And so that doesn't mean that we never put them in a pool. We try to take mitigating factors, uh life jackets being one of them. Helmets on bicycles. Really, harm reduction can be a strategy to save lives um for for behaviors. And um Chelsea's gonna share a little bit more about um uh syringes kind of in particular and how they can meet people where they're at and then help support them to uh to treatment and to other areas uh based on their research.
So I'm gonna try to go through the next few slides a little bit quickly because I know we're taking a lot of time. But um syringe service programs have been collecting data about just the um programs for years. So most of the data that we have comes from traditional storefront models of syringe exchange. But some of the things that we have been able to see from that data um over the last twenty years is that syringe service programs increase entry into substance use disorder treatment. So one of the ways that we're able to do that is by providing people with constant information about treatment and recovery services. Also, i- they reduce needle stick injuries um in the community by providing disposal as well as Sharps containers for people to be able to safely um dispose of all of their used syringes. They reduce overdose deaths with the provision of naloxone and also just um training that we can provide people um to help them prevent overdoses. And they help people get into treatment and care for HIV and also to test for HIV and hepatitis C. So one of the things that we're able to do here in Nevada is a novel approach. It's syringe vending machines. So we in Nevada are the only ones in the continental U.S. that have vending machines for syringes. They offer many of the same services that are seen at a traditional syringe exchange storefront. They're standalone units, so they look really similar to a soda vending machine. I know we have a picture a little bit later in the slides. Uh but they dispense sterile syringes and then they can also accept used syringes for disposal. Um it's not a novel approach across the world. They've been used around um Europe for years. Also, there was a machine in Puerto Rico for a while that was damaged um during Hurricane Maria. But it's really a new way to tackle an old problem. Um we can use it to increase HIV and STD testing and deliver sterile materials to help pe- keep people safe. Um we can, w- we knew when we opened the storefront in Clark County in twenty seventeen that one storefront wouldn't be enough to provide these services all across the state. So um it just helped us to reduce the cost of operating a brick and mortar location like in different areas. Um we're able to partner with like-minded and like-missioned agencies so we can place these machines in a public health nurse's office to get people that may not normally go there to walk in the door. Um we're able to place them in mental health as well as drug and alcohol treatment providers' offices, homeless coalitions, et cetera. Um we have the machines placed in agencies because we want community providers to be able to interact with the clients. Um that way, we can help get them into treatment quicker. We hope that syringe vending machines reach out to people in the community who may be resistant to services. Um and that includes our unsheltered homeless populations. Um they reduce stigma because they allow people to access all of their supplies discreetly. And um they also help to reach non-traditional populations like people in um suburban or rural areas that may not have access to a lot of the services that we have in urban areas. So this is a picture of what the vending machine look- looks like and sitting next to it is a Sharps container. So currently, we have six sites in Clark County that have a vending machine. Um two of them are medical clinics, two are um medication-assisted treatment clinics. And then we have one in just a regular sort of nightclub. Um and currently in the machines, we have syringe kits. We also have kits that have safe sex materials like condoms. We have wound care kits as well, Sharps containers. We um can put a lot of other things in there, so that's something that we can work out with the community. So if there are other items that you think would be good to have in the machine, we can place those there. If there are items that you do not want in a machine, we could take those out. The sky is really kind of the limit of what we can include in the machines as long as it's um a medical-grade thing.
These are just some of the other um communities uh that we've been working on. I know we shared data from Clark County. As Chelsea mentioned, it's the only place in the continental United States. Once we have other rural communities across Nevada, we'd love to showcase that data. Um here are just a few of the other communities um that we've been working with over the last couple of years. So uh Mineral County um is currently uh looking to place a syringe vending machine um or, sorry, a public health vending machine um in uh in their community. White Pine County is currently looking for a location uh to house their public health vending machine. Elko County approved syringe exchange for their local homeless encampment a few months ago, four months ago, four months ago? Four months ago. Um and then Nye County, we do have a letter from their county commissioners and are kind of looking uh for a community that um has identified uh that they want to move forward with um these um with this group. So I'd just like to share with you because it's it's it is beyond just Clark County. Um but obviously, folks are in that capacity-building planning uh prior to implementation stage.
So in order for someone to sign up to use the vending machines, they do have to provide some sort of identification. Um and then. to provide some sort of identification. And then we complete a form with them where we just take minimal information and then we provide them with a magnetic swipe card similar to a credit card that they can swipe at the machine, or, and they also get a unique ID number that they can enter into the machine if they lose their swipe card. Providing an identification kind of can help if the community wants to limit people's use of the machine due to age. Each machine comes with a sharps disposal container sitting next to it. So we actually collect all of the sharps that we put out into, into the community. So we make sure that we get them all back and we take them to our office in Las Vegas and we dispose of them in that sterilized machine. So it's an autoclave machine and after the syringes are sterilized, autoclaved, it shreds the syringes and the result is a non-biohazard material that can be safely disposed of in regular trash.
So, so these are just kind of some next steps that we wanted to make you aware of. We'd love to continue the community conversations. As Chelsea mentioned, she came up a couple of weeks ago to talk broadly about the peer program and what a peer might do in communities and additional services that are available. So we'd love to continue the community conversations and look for opportunities in areas of additional support. And then kind of in any community that was ready to move forward, looking for a location, additional linkage services so that we could provide the, the treatment, mental health linkage information locally. And then having a very strong evaluation plan, since, since these are very novel, we know that the impact on the community of being able to share that data broadly back with you all and other bodies of interest would be vital to the success of any project. So-
And that was one of my questions, I don't mean to interrupt you, is-
Yeah.
Do you quarterly, yearly send back a report on how many of each things have been utilized? So you know what's going, kind of you have an idea of what's going on in your county?
Yes. So you run, do you run the numbers weekly?
We run the numbers weekly. And in Elko, we provide them quarterly.
Alright, thank you.
And briefly, before we wrap up, we get many similar questions, so I just have a couple of FAQs to cover before we wrap up. We often get asked if syringe services programs are legal. They are. In two thousand and sixteen, the federal government said that certain components of, of syringe services program, except for the provision of needles and syringes themselves. So those are all funded through private dollars, but other products that are in the machine that are, are funded through public dollars, so condoms, Band-Aids, those types of things. The actual syringes themselves are purchased through private dollars and Chelsea can share a little bit more about that. But decisions to use syringe services program are made up to the state and local levels. So in Nevada, in two thousand and thirteen, we passed the Sterile Hypodermic Access Bill, which says that availability of, and access of sterile hypodermic devices, it made that legal, protect the right of people who access those programs. And then that they operate in harmony with local law enforcement. So we have been in conversation with the sheriff, and I wouldn't want to speak for him, but if he, if he would like to say anything, could open that up today. Do syringe services programs help people stop or reduce drug use? The research shows us that yes, they're five times more likely to enter treatment for substance use disorder and stop injecting, and three times more likely to report a reduction in injection frequency, which decreases risk for contracting bloodborne pathogens such as HIV or hepatitis C. Do they help to prevent overdose? The research also suggests yet, yes. As Chelsea mentioned, being a key point for distribution of naloxone through the public health vending machines, locally within communities, can really help to not only have naloxone, but also rescue breathing and how you link people to care who do overdose. So that can be a key touch point for a very vulnerable community to be able to access naloxone. Do they cause more needles in public places? The research is showing that no, they do not. A recent study out of the University of Miami, which was the test case for the entire state of Florida, so they have some really good evaluation tools, found that implementation of a syringe services program increased the number of clean syringes in circulation, but did not increase refuse in their studies. And do they lead to more crime and drug use? Definitely a question that we've heard. No, they don't cause an increase in illegal drug use or illegal crime, is what the, what the data are showing. And finally, are they cost-effective? I feel like that's a really important consideration in addition to all of the other pieces here. So they are demonstrated to reduce healthcare costs by preventing HIV, viral hepatitis and other infections. The lifetime cost of treating a person living with HIV is almost half a million dollars, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Hospitalizations for substance use-related infections can cost over seven hundred million each year, endocarditis and other complications that an individual might experience. And oftentimes, folks are either uninsured or on, on, on state insurance. So I do really think that finding opportunities to prevent these types of infections, not only from a human perspective, but from a cost savings perspective, can be really important. This, these are the folks, Chelsea and I just merely get to be the face. They get to travel across Nevada and see all the beautiful communities that are here. This is, you know, a joint effort. As I mentioned, the Nevada HIV Prevention Program Manager is really the one who's, who's asked the Health District to be able to help have these conversations. The folks at Track B Impact Exchange, so Chelsea's boss Rick and his team, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention have been helping us design evaluation tools, community tools, conversations, to just make sure that we're using the best available evidence that, that is across the nation. So if, if the folks in Indiana are doing something great, they're happy to share that with us and then we can bring that to the folks of Nevada and say, is this something that works for you or not? And then the team at the Health District, we have broad support from multiple departments there. Thank you for your time and patience and great questions so far. Chelsea and I would love to answer more if there's time available or learn more about what your questions are.
I have no questions, I have a statement to make. I think it's a slippery slope. I also, oh, sorry. There. No questions, but I have a statement. I think it's a slippery slope. I think, this is my opinion, that it condones that we're like in favor of, it's okay that people use drugs. The same, same thing as condom machines, I think it's okay. We're sending a message to a youth, it's okay. This is nothing new. I have a home in Sacramento and it's something that I'm constantly dealing with as a homeowner there. The governor, or not the governor, the mayor just passed, they'll be building little houses for homeless people and giving them safe shelters to actually inject drugs. So it's like, it becomes, well, my point is you start here and where does it end up? I mean, it's like we're bringing the metropolitan, big city areas into our rural counties. I don't want it. I don't want no part of it. It is, as a homeowner in California, it's a nuisance. And statistically, it's not making it better, it's growing. Homelessness is becoming more, drug use is becoming more. So it's a nice presentation, it sounds great, how it's presented, but I'm not in favor of it, so.
I appreciate your time coming up here. If I heard this from anybody else last week, I wouldn't have believed it. AIDS is gone in nine years, according to President Trump, and I believe him. So we're doing the right thing. I agree with Commissioner Sparks, slippery slope, what's next? I'm against it.
Thank you. I, I need a clarification because I, I know we've covered a lot here, but I'm going on the, just on the basic syringe. Are we looking at vending machines that they can get a syringe? Is that what you're saying? Because I, I thought when it said you, you actually are going to do the trade-off, they come in with a bad needle, we properly dispose it, and you give them a clean one.
So I'm glad you asked for that clarification. Thank you for your question. So in the state of Nevada, we, we do not have one-to-one syringe exchange. That is, that's a state-by-state law. It's actually not the evidence-based, the best evidence is to not do one-to-one syringe exchange because it would require an individual who might need services to then go find syringes to be able to access them. Does that make sense? So if they don't currently have supplies, but are in need of supplies, they would have to go into a community and find them. So one of the goals of syringe services programs and harm reduction is to make the services as easy and nonjudgmental to walk into as possible. So, so someone could, if they were interested in accessing a vending machine, they would come in, they would fill out a brief form to just talk about kind of current use behavior and everything else. On-site, that form is then, I would say, use the word verified, by a, a, a human being, whether that's Chelsea's staff, whether it's the staff on-site where the machines are at or elsewhere. And then, and then they're issued a card. So based on, and then they can access the products in the machine at an interval that's determined by the agency that hosts it and Track B Exchange.
Okay. So where you have your machines are just for the people that have the cards. So they did come in and they were evaluated and given the card originally. Do you have any break-ins and things like that on your machines? Because vending machines are always, it seems like a problem.
We've never had any vandalism or break-ins on the vending machines.
Okay. So what we put on this, in this vending machine would be up to if our commission wants to do that? Is that what you're saying?
So in order to, to, to use public dollars for the, the housing of the machine itself, the state has asked us to present to local commissioners and law enforcement to receive a letter of support and/or acknowledgement that, that you're aware of the services in the community. So that, that doesn't have to happen today. That doesn't have to happen ever. That's not in the interest of the community. If there's more information that this group wants, in other communities, we posted community forums to share this presentation and answer questions from communities and gather a little bit more localized data and information to come back to, to commission groups or other areas. So, so there are lots of options.
Okay. Please clarify that for me, why you would need the letter if we don't intend to do this? Because you have, you have a copy of our agenda, so they know that you presented it to our agenda.
Correct.
To our commission, on the agenda. So you want a letter from us, even if we don't support this, to say we are aware?
No, ma'am.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Something more to say. Also, I want the commission to realize that if we start accepting state dollars to put programs like this into our county, they got you on the hook. It can later come down the line that, okay, hey, this is point, case in point in Sacramento, they're building these homes now because there's so much trash and needle devices, drug paraphernalia on the river, right? So now that what they're doing is they're getting a safe place for these people, but it's on the backs of taxpayers. That's what I want to point out, for people who are not responsible, onto the backs of people who are responsible. I choose not to use drugs. And it's like, I'm not saying that I don't have empathy, that I don't understand, but I think it's, it's the wrong thing for Lander County. Thank you.
Okay. So this is a bigger issue for me, the youth. And this, this is a small community.
Yeah.
And I, with, from working with the sheriff's office for thirty years, yes, we have a drug problem here, but I don't know if we have to the degree where we would need this. Because if you put this out there to the youth that's saying it's okay, you know, in their minds, they're saying it's okay that you utilize, you know, intravenous drugs. And I have, I just think that that's for such a small community, we're sending out the wrong message at this time for something like that. I mean, I, and I, I understand in, you know, like Las Vegas, I, I get that.
Definitely.
But in our size community, and we are so separated from Vegas or Reno, we're in the middle and we're kind of by ourselves, I do not want to, we have a good community here, and we have a bunch of really awesome kids, and I do not want to send them the message that it's okay to utilize intravenous drugs. Now, if we were having a ton of cases of HIV and those kind of things and we needed to try to curb that, absolutely. But at this point in time, I don't see that. And so I just can't put that message out there that it's okay for this. So.
Would it be all right to respond to that briefly? So, so I'm glad you brought up young people. That definitely is something that other communities have shared. So the first piece is that, so we can restrict ages on, on the machine if that's, if that's something, so other communities have opted to, to use age restrictions. So, so not accessible to under eighteen. Additionally, housing them in locations where people are seeking other health services that may already be going in. So not necessarily, you know, out in the open or just anywhere, is another way that folks have, have worked around this. Finally, all of the items are in opaque boxes. So unless you're someone who, who has gone through the signup process and knows what's in the machine, oftentimes, people aren't aware of, they say, oh, it's a vending machine. Yep, we have products for our clients in there. And that kind of is, is the, the end of, of the conversation. So I, I do respect your point a hundred percent. And I will say harm reduction is not the be-all, end-all of substance use services. There is absolutely a place in all communities for prevention and early intervention and all of these other great projects and programs that are happening across the board. I, what we see is that, what we see just based on the data alone for vulnerability to outbreaks is that there is an opportunity to have kind of a plan in place or an action, an, an idea of what to do if you were to see an increase in bloodborne pathogen, HIV, you know, HIV in your community and/or overdoses due to injection drug use.
I like that one. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
The, the point of the vending machine, we're, and again, I want to point out, we're dealing with drug users, so they don't always make the best choices. So, and we're dealing with drug dealers who don't care about kids, obviously, because they'll, they'll push them. And it's like, who's to say that they don't go, go and get these things and then able to distribute it to them, hey, you got a clean needle? When that, that could be the thought in the child's head or a person's head, it's like, I'm not going to do it because I don't know if the needle's clean. I could get this. That could be a deterrent to them. Now we make it completely safe. Oh, man, I'm going to do this drug because I got, I knew I got a clean needle. So I just want to say that.
I, I also wanted to add, based on our first-year analyses of the syringe vending machine, the youngest person that reported utilizing it in Las Vegas, right, again, that's the, the place we have data, so I'm sharing that, was twenty-one years old. And the age range was from twenty-one to seventy within the community. So we didn't have a younger group of individuals, at least in that community, accessing them.
So I heard this is two-part, you need two letters, one from the sheriff, one from the commissioners?
If, if the project were to move forward, if that's not something the, the commission is interested in, then-
Did, did you speak to the sheriff first and give him a chance to make a recommendation to us?
I spoke with the sheriff when I was here last night. I'm not sure if he would be interested, because I don't want to speak for him. So I'm interested in-
Because we're gonna, we're gonna follow this guy's recommendation.
Let's sit down.
Okay.
Sheriff Ron Underwood for the record. And yes, I met with Chelsea several weeks ago. We had a discussion on this. I'm kind of on the fence. But we did, I told her that would be more of a public health issue than, than the sheriff's office issue, number one. So she went down and she met with Brandy, our health nurse, and that's where it went from there.
Yeah, we do.
So I am aware with this, and like I told Chelsea, this has been presented years ago. I can't tell you exactly when, but I have had people in my office years ago that wanted to do the needle exchange. And I felt exactly like you people did at that point. Like Kathy said, we are a small community. You know, if you look at the statistics for law enforcement, the needles we have found out in the public are minimal, mainly around drug houses where you know you're going to find it, and trash poles when we were doing them, we would find the needles at that point. We do find some occasionally around on the streets and the alleys, but not a lot at this point in time. So to answer your question, yes, I have spoke with her and another lady.
Christina.
So we have had this discussion.
Thank you. And we do have, we did have an opportunity to meet with Brandy and she did provide a letter of support, thank you, sir, for, for, for us, which I'm happy. Would it be okay to bring that up to you?
Yeah, that's all right.
All right, okay.
So actually, I have a question for Brandy, if you don't mind.
Judy, so do you want her to read the letter? It's very short.
No, well, a simple question.
No, you're fine. Brandy Ben Go, for the record.
Is, have, without violating any HIPAA, whatnot, statistically-wise, can you tell us your experience, have you had people coming in with-
So for public health, that's not really an outreach where people come in. I have had naloxone there in the clinic. I ordered ten Kate, or ten packs of that probably two months ago. I don't have any of those left. There are people in our community that are utilizing those services. Harm reduction is important. Do I want my kids to do drugs? Absolutely not. If my kid ends up doing drugs, do I want him to be safe? Absolutely.
I guess my question, Brandy, though, is, is, and you kind of answered it as far as it's not your area, but have you, do you know, are we getting an increase in-
I think there has been an increase of overdoses in our community.
But not, I'm not talking so much the overdoses.
I don't know about the needle use.
Is, is the bloodborne-
That would be-
Pathogens.
Statistics from their hospital.
If there's, yeah. And that was, I was curious about, you know, if, if we're seeing more- And that was, I was curious about, you know, if, if we're seeing more of that, you know, from the dirty needles and stuff.
I have a question. So does the drug for the overdose and the needle program go hand in hand? Or can they be separated where we're using the overdose drug? And right now, we're not using the needle program. Are those two, are, are, do they go hand in hand, or are they able to be separated?
They can be separated, and that's also the same thing with the peer program as well. So if, um, the commission is interested in having a peer, um, that could help get people into treatment, and is not interested in the needle program, that's fine as well. They can all be separated from each other.
So Brandy, you mentioned you've gone through a lot of the drug thing. Naloxone, yeah. Is there anything they can do with it to make it something else? Because that seems like an awful lot.
No, so, so naloxone is often, sorry, referred to as the Lazarus drug, um, uh, that someone could use it if you are on, uh, if you were someone who's using opioids, whether that be for pain medication from a provider or illicit or illicit, um, it, it, uh, kicks the opioid receptor off your neurons. If you're not, it does nothing. So sometimes if an individual, I, as my colleagues in EMS have shared, is having a cardiac event, uh, and they can't rule out overdose, they will administer naloxone to see if that's, uh, the reason that that individual's having in, in cardiac arrest. And if, if it does nothing, then they know that that's not what it was. So it doesn't have other, um, implications.
Thank you. Um, regarding the, the needles, if that is a concern, we can always address that later with the, the proper containers, because we have people that are, um, on insulin also and, and having good places to, to carry those needles is always an important thing. But, um, number one, thank you, um, for, for coming and sharing this with us today. If something, um, should horribly happen, like we have an outbreak of something, this is still available and we could contact you at that time, is that correct?
Absolutely. Um, in some other communities as well, they have, um, requested sharps con- just the sharps container without the vending machine. And if that's of interest, uh, to the commission, we can take that back as a request as well. So, uh, as Chelsea mentioned, um, it, it's not one package. We can separate things out based on the need of the community. So if the peer program is of interest, or just the sharps container, or both of those at this time, um, that, that's okay with us as well.
Well, with the sharps container, I think is a good idea, because even people that are, um, that have diabetes and stuff like that, that use those and don't have any place to put them, and if they drop them in the garbage can and then someone who's cleaning, you know, from a restaurant. I mean, I think that that's valid, uh, at least at a minimum, the sharps container, because like I said, working for the sheriff's office, we'd have calls, you know, lots of calls of, you know, people finding needles just on the ground. But I'm believing, like I said, more from like diabetes and people don't have a place to dispose of that stuff. So I mean, the containers, I definitely don't have an issue with, and the overdose drug, definitely. But right now, and like I said, I just think that, um, um, putting that out there as far as the receiving the syringes right now in this small community, kinda makes, puts a little knot in my stomach, so.
Absolutely.
I'd like to make a motion if you're ready.
Okay.
I'd make a motion, we disapprove a syringe exchange, pierce, supported treatment recovery services to be placed in the health nurse building.
All right. We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. We're gonna take just a few minute break, please?
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. All right, very good. Alrighty. Can I go back onto, um, number two, discussion for possible action and to approve, disapprove proclamation twenty twenty dash zero one honoring National County Government Month this April? Okay, we're gonna wait just a second. All right.
Thank you, I'm Madam Chair. Yes, every, every month, NACO kinda puts this aside because it are, our County Government Month, it gives us an opportunity to, um, in- interact with our citizens, any activities that they would like to do. It just kinda highlights our effective county programs. And it's to basically raise county awareness of, um, and more understanding of, of the various roles that we have and we provide to the county. Uh, last year, we did a bullet, um, with an ad, and we, uh, we put that in the paper, which just kinda highlighted the different things that the county did. Uh, they also sent on a sample resolution, um, uh, proclamation, excuse me, which is in, in your book. If you'd like to do that, um, I, um, also kinda like the idea with our bullet that, that we did last year with the different bullets on highlighting. So, uh, whatever you would like to do, but I would like, like us to do at least that, even if we don't get involved in any other activities next month. Or we might decide to do something extra and present something to the schools or something like that. There's, there's lots of things we could do. Unfortunately, um, it doesn't give us a, a, a whole lot of, of, uh, choice the way that it's written, because it simply says possible action on the proclamation. But I wanted to give you the background on it of where it's coming from, in case you didn't want the proclamation, yes?
I, I just wanna say, this is just based on the sample resolution, it's a recommendation. And if, if you'd like it changed, I'm happy to change it to whatever the commission would like.
I guess the question is, can we do that?
Yeah.
The, with the way that it's worded, is it okay?
Well, if you're gonna opt it, make it your own, you can, you can make any change with.
Okay, cause it says approve or disapprove proclamation?
Well, if you, if, you can, you can disapprove it and modify it.
Okay, I di- I didn't wanna modify the proclamation, I wanted to see if we could do some other things.
Yeah, you can do that, but you, you can either approve it and, 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 and say we wanna look at other things, or you can disapprove it and say, as long as you're approving or disapproving it, one of those in, in your decision.
Okay. And then if we decide to do some other things, we'd have to put it on the next agenda to approve that?
To adopt it, yes.
Got it. Okay, that's where we're coming from. Okay, so I guess the question is, um, if you've read the proclamation, is it something you wanna go forward with? Um, although I still would recommend we, we have it as another agenda item with perhaps the bullet, cause we have, we still have time to do that, so whatever is your pleasure.
Whatever you wanna do.
Okay, I'm, I'll make a motion that we approve the proclamation regardless of, you know, whether do we decide to put it in the paper or not. At least we have a proclamation, we're saying, um, that yes, we're gonna, we're gonna honor it with that. Um, and then I would also ask that we have it on our agenda, so we can take a look at something else for next time.
Second.
All right, there's a second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
I have a question. Katie Sullivan for the record. Um, do we need to have this signed then, or no, it's only coming back?
Yeah, but it should be signed and approved, because I don't think the proclamation's coming back. It's the other things that, that, that you cut. That's my understanding of your motion.
It just says down here...
It just says down here, those voting aye and nay, but, um, um, I, I didn't add for the chair to sign, so. I make a motion that the chair sign the proclamation.
Okay, so we're gonna wait. Wait for, wait for it to come back up.
If you can get a second, you've got...
All right, so we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Brian? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Anything else we need to do on that? Are we good? All right. All right, moving on to number three for county manager, for possible action to approve, disapprove, or modify a newly revised and updated Lander County policies and procedures. So, um, uh, I went ahead and went through this, and it's, it's a cookie cutter, um, policies and procedures, it's a good procedure, as you can tell that it was, um, you know, that, uh, it, it just is a standard and it's good. And I, I believe that it, my opinion is it covers the bases that we need and to get us up to date, um, where we need to be right now. So that's basically my statement on that. If anybody else has anything else to say?
Yeah, no, I agree. Cookie cutter. It, uh, gives us the foundation that we need to be legal, so, and then we can always change anything anywhere down the line that we wish, but I think at this point, it's a good starting point, for sure.
Have anybody else that, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I, I just wanted to say that we did, this is absolutely a cookie cutter. We did get it from PoolPact. It's been reviewed by the PoolPact Legal Department as well as, um, the District Attorney's Office, but it was just their, their regular template, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, do we have a motion? Am I missing something? I'm getting looked at. So, did we, is there any further discussion on this?
Well, I make a motion that we approve the newly modified and revised, updated Lander County?
I'll start over. I make a motion that we approve the modified and newly released and updated Lander County policies and procedures.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Very good. So, we, um, move on to number four for possible action to approve, disapprove, or modify the newly revised and updated Battle Mountain Recreation, um, policy and procedures.
Can we just do that with policies and procedures?
This is, this is, this is, this is for the rec center.
So the only, I mean, looking through it, honestly, I, we've never had a rec center before. Never had a rec center before. I don't really see a huge problem with it, other than there's one line in there I think that everybody's aware of. Um, but I think, from my understanding, is that that's meant to be more of a hat pack for our employees rather than part of our policies and procedures, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so...
One hundred percent.
Okay.
What was the line?
Well, I'll just...
The one about minorities?
Yes, yes.
And the ex- that's the experts' words.
Yes.
It's, it's not anybody from our county.
Yes.
I, I can understand why people were concerned about that. If I would've read that without knowing what I do, watching the last Olympics and Michael Phelps concern, he started a national initiative to get kids in the inner cities, the minorities, to swim, because it, it, it's accurate. More minority kids drowned because they have no s- no skills. So we need to bring that forward and announce that to our employees, so that they're aware.
Right, it's correct on the hat pack side of it, but not as a policy and procedure.
Right.
Because you're violate, we're violating EEO, right?
It's a policy that the employees should follow, because they, they look for these people because of language barriers.
Right, yeah, exactly, right.
So, but it, it, it's not part of the policy, it's perceived as part of the employee's fault.
It's in there so that our employees know. That's, that's the main concern.
And, uh, my, that, uh, with all honesty, was my main concern on that, and that it was originally thought, um, uh, that it was an American Red Cross document, and it wasn't. And so I had made contact, cause I just wanted that, when I, that word, I just, just like, wah! Uh, honestly, I was just a little, a little beside myself when I saw that. So I did do a little research to find out how that came, and it came off a statistical report, and I understand that. Um, my fear was just to make sure that we never, um, you know, cross any boundaries we're not supposed to. And like I said, I know that it came off a statistical report, but originally was reported as an American Red Cross document, which it's not, but it came off a statistical report from American Red Cross, so, um...
It says that, um, let me see here for, um... Ted, have you reviewed the rest of it? Does the rest of it look fine to you?
The rest of it looks fine, and it's...
Thank you, Judy. And, and it, it, it wasn't, it wasn't made by any Lander County boards. We got it from the experts. The lead experts and, and Sean's here and can explain that, but it's, the number one man is the one that wrote all this stuff. And I don't know where we'd get a better version, to be quite candid with you.
Well, I'm just, I'm just surprised that if we have a, a professional on it, that they would put that, they would make that mistake of saying, you know, this needs to be part of it, rather than, you know, making that definition that this is part of like a hat pack for your employee, not part of your policies and procedures. So that's why I would just wanna make sure. I mean, I don't see anything else, but...
Yeah, but, yeah, that...
Makes me a little bit worried that if they let that go, is there anything else in there where we might be missing?
No, no, that's, that shouldn't be part of the policies and procedures. Like, like, the, the chair points out, that should be for employees. And just for your, for your be- I think it's included. It's my understanding it was included for your benefit.
Okay.
For the board's benefit, not to be included in the policies and procedures. Is, is that correct, Ted?
Yes, and Sean Baker for the record, and that was just included, cause it still needs... Uh, it still needs to be approved by the board to be used for the county employees, but it is not part of the policies and procedures.
Okay, and to make sure that that is a definite definition. This is not, this, this document is not part of the policies and procedures, it's...
Right.
Okay.
Well, that's the only thing we're approving today is policies and procedures.
Procedures, yes.
A hat pack? We can bring that back with different orders. Would that, that's not, would that be something that'd be approved by us? Would that be something to be approved by your, your rec center head?
Well, they, they can improve that, but, but I, I think, I think they wanted you to, to look at it, uh, to see what they're gonna ask their employees to abide by. That's my understanding. Am I correct, you guys?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, at this point, I guess we're just looking at policies and procedures. It's not a part of, and that's what we're, yeah, that's what we're adopting today, policies and procedures, so.
All right, and I have something, and it is, you know, I've read through this as well, and we need to get something online with the policies and procedures for the rec center. And we, if we find that there's something that's not working with these, we can bring them back and address them at that time. But I, I, we have to get something put in place, and they are, you know, and I've read through a handful of times and the other policies and procedures. And like I said, that was, like, it's one of my biggest issues, but it's, as far as the rest of it goes, um, it's pretty, you know, for the most part, a cookie cutter. But if we find that there are issues or something that does not work, we will bring them back. I believe it can be brought back at that time, so.
Well, I was just gonna comment that in reading through this, some of the, the points, um, it looked to me like we, we had this policy and procedure when we had the swimming pool, because there's some of it that, that actually relates to when we had the open pool. So we kinda actually did have the policies and procedures, just very outdated and not totally applicable to the entire rec center. So, that was all.
And, and I agree, but the only difference is, is the whole new system as far as the chemicals being mixed in that, the big system in the back and those things, that was something that was totally new to the swimming pool as well.
Now, would that, like, something like that, would that be part of policy procedure? Or is that more, again, it's the hat pack, like what you're training your employees to do?
It's both, Commissioner, or you don't, and, and I was talking to the chair yesterday about this. It's good to put it in the policies and procedures, so the employees will have it twice, basically. It's an established procedure that is included with the policies. That, that's what it is. And it's an employee, employees' procedure, and they should have it independent of the policies and procedures as their established procedure. So it should be there twice. So it is good to have it, uh, these things, and, and if things change, if the law changes, it needs to be updated. And this is the only drawback, is that you have to modify the policies and procedures. If you don't have it in the policies and procedures, you can just update the policies of the pool. So it takes a little extra time, but it's not a bad idea, but it's up to, it's up to the board, where you want it, to be honest.
Any more discussion? Are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the newly revised and updated Battle Mountain Recreation Center policies and procedures.
All right, one second.
With a noted change.
With a noted change.
With a noted change. With that, cause we're not gonna leave that one document in there, correct?
Right.
That's it. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Good job, Sean.
Yeah. All right, so then number five has been pulled out, right?
Yes, your agenda has been amended. There is no number five.
Okay.
We can't shut it off. Cut it off, I can cut it off, cut the wire if you want.
Want us to stop the recording and then?
Ted likes to talk all the time anyway.
Well, maybe it knows.
Do we want to just take a couple minute break while we get this figured out? Or we're going to take just a few minute break? We'll just take a couple minute break. We're gonna bring the meeting back into order. So, are we ready?
Arsenal here.
Okay.
Well, it's just setting the meeting.
Okay, so we'll just go ahead and do, alright, number six, for possible action to set a, a date to hold the Lander County Commission meeting in Austin. Go, go ahead.
So, I, I know in the, in the past, um, the commission has always talked about having a meeting in the south. So, I put it on there to see, um, if you want to have one in the south, or when, if, and so forth, just so it's been addressed.
I say, when we have some more items that pertain to Austin, so. Because we can set it at any time, correct? So, once we have some, some issues that pertain to Austin, then we could maybe set it for that following meeting or something, right? Rather than setting a date right now, when we don't know.
Right, because you can't do, you can't do Battle Mountain issues in Austin.
Right.
And, and we'd kind of hate setting one and then going there and having no, no issues, no agenda.
Actually, yes, um, I think we can probably do this ahead of time enough. I do think with us taking over the water and the GID, um, that it certainly would be after July.
Yeah.
But I don't see any reason to set it today, if that's okay. Um, we'll see how that goes. But I'm sure we would be looking at at least July or August, or sometime after it's, it's taken place on that with the, the new regime, if that's okay with everyone.
So, so what are we going, are we just?
No action.
No action on this item? Alright. Alright, number seven, for possible action to approve, disapprove, approve future agenda requests by county commissioners, and whether to include them as a future agenda item. Specifically, Commissioner Kathleen Ancho has requested that Delando County hire a consultant to review Lander County, um, current update and newly draft, um, drafted policies, procedures, and current practices, and to report back to the board with our findings and recommendations, and this board needs to decide whether this item goes on to a future, to be placed on a future agenda. So, to give a little background, this doesn't have to do with all county, um, offices, which it was brought to my attention that that was a possibility, and that wasn't in my idea at all, and so if I ruffled some feathers, that definitely was not the purpose. Um, my idea was just like when we have auditors for the financial part, that every once in a while, that we have auditors in the admin side, just make sure everything is, we're, you know, just to go through and make sure we're, um, crossing all our Ts and dotting our Is, just for transparency, and so that's, um, basically where this idea of mine to, uh, came from, to put on, to ask if everybody's in for that, or kind of where we're at. But I want to make, definitely make sure that people know that that's not for the whole county and all elected offices, because that definitely was not my intention.
It's more like structured.
Yeah, yeah, to go through structurally and make sure that we're all aligned in our admin part, everything structurally, and we're doing everything.
Something we could do to fine tune.
Yeah, exactly, and that's basically all that it was for, um, so that's where that came from.
So, how often do you think you, you want that to be reviewed?
Um, you know, I, I would think that, you know, every four years, or, you know, eight years, just maybe when the commission change is over. Right now, that I don't have, that wasn't a plan of how many years, I just thought right now we could just, um, go through and look, you know, structurally.
Well, I'm, I'm for putting it on the agenda and discussing it, at least, and we'll, and we'll find out where we'll go, so I'm alright with that. Well, I, I would actually like to address this, because there's a couple issues. As I did read Kathy's agenda request form, and then I read how the agenda request was written. And it does not, I, I don't know how this verbiage got changed from this agenda request form to what is actually on the agenda. And as far as, um, what this agenda is saying is for possible action to approve, disapprove, future agenda requests by county commissioners, and whether to include them as a future agenda item, I'm sorry, is, as commissioners, we don't have to put it on the agenda to ask if we can put something on the agenda. And the chair is the one that determines what goes on the agenda. So, I want to know how this came out on the agenda the way it did.
So, I did some research procedurally, because of my own ignorance on it, so I checked with Winamaka and I checked with Elko, because that was my understanding, that the chair basically has a say and the co-chair works with them. So, when it first happened, I was upset about it. But it was my misunderstanding on the procedural of it. We give the county manager the authority to administer the agendas. Uh, that's exactly how Elko County does it. They have the county manager, an executive secretary, and a county attorney supplied by the DA's office, and Winamaka does it similarly. So, really, because our job is to do business here every two weeks. Now, I asked both the questions as well, it's like, how are the agenda items done? And they said, well, if a, if a commissioner wants something on, it goes on. We don't question it, it goes on. So, that would be the one thing that I wouldn't be okay with, is that, is if the commissioner wants something to go on, it should go on, and then we discuss it as a board. If it's, if it's, if, uh, if it's not the, the board's pleasure to take that up, or to vote at unanimity or majority, then it's shut down at that time. But I don't think a commissioner's request to have something agendaized should be, should be in this format, I just don't. And that's, that's the feedback I got from other counties, they don't, they don't, they don't stop agenda requests by commissioners, so. But anyway, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was clear on that, so.
And I've done, because I was a little confused on all of this as well, and did some research from different counties to find out. And yes, it's, um, handled by the, uh, county manager's office, but like Humboldt County, they have future agenda items, um, still on there. And then they turn in their agenda items to the, um, county manager, if they have something they also want to be put on there. So, that's, you know, and I've called some other areas and some different boards and, uh, to try to figure this out, because I was, I was confused as well. Because I, in, when I was thinking of this item, I was thinking, this is going to be an item that gets put out to vote anyway. It's not something that, just by me putting it on here, it's going to be done. So, uh, my assumption when putting it on is it's going to be put on and be, all these people, all of us have to agree on it, or it's not going anywhere, anywhere. So, that's kind of where my confusion, you know, came, that, um, that we do, are able to put agendas out there, and that they're requests, and other than legal, they're not supposed to be changed, because at that point, it's no longer your request. Um, so, that's, you know, this has been a very trying, a little incident for me to try to figure this out, so. But however, this, you know, it's, it basically covers the same idea as far as getting it out there, so it, we can either agree on it or disagree. So, that's kind of where I stand on it.
Well, Kathy?
I'm a little bit confused what we're agreeing on with this, because it says that you want to have policies and procedures reviewed by someone from outside. Who do you want?
But she's talking about the structure. She's really talking about the structure, how the, it's my understanding, and I apologize, but in talking to you yesterday. It's my understanding, she's talking about the structure of the admin department. So, we'd have to change the verbiage. Even if this was on the agenda today, she's not talking about the policies and procedures. She's talking about how the admin department is structured.
Well, when we, oh, sorry. Wouldn't you want them to look at policies and procedures to make sure structurally we're following them?
Well, you, one follows the other, yes, yes.
Yes, you know, that's the whole point, is to make sure that it's a very, that it's.
And I don't know if you want to look at, but. We don't know if the structure follows the policies and procedures or vice versa.
Right.
So, it would include the structures, let me put it that way.
Yeah.
So, a couple things going on here. Um, you know, my question didn't really get answered, and this is a two-part agenda, in, in such that it's really not related, because as I read before, the action is to approve, disapprove future agenda requests by commissioners. And then, secondly, it's mentioned on whether or not we want to put this item on the agenda. So, we can't even be discussing this item at the moment, because it's not agendized as such for discussion. So, secondly, I'd really like to know, you know, Kathy mentioned, you put in an agenda request, you write out what you would like on that agenda. It goes on the agenda, and somewhere along the line is, we do have legal to look at it as far as verbiage and, and legality, but I want to know how this agenda item got changed, to read what it says, because this is not what was put on the agenda. This was not the agenda request that our chair requested, and how it went from that to this.
Well, it's not really agendaized discussed that, is it?
No.
No.
I mean, I understand, I understand the point you're making.
Well, I.
But I will an, I will answer one thing, you guys can make any policy you want as far as agendas, as far as I'm concerned. Any policy, you just have to say what it is, and tell your county manager what your policy is for with.
Because right now, by code, Keith is, he administers the.
He does, and there is nothing in policies and procedures, or the ordinances, that says otherwise. And you need to say a policy, so we could follow it, and that's what you need to do.
So, I'm not going to get my answer, because I've, yeah, you're right, it's not a gen, it's not on the agenda. And neither is the policy and procedure of how we set these agendas like this. I mean, it, it is under code, but.
So, my question is, then how do I, how do I, how do I get it agendaized so we can come back and discuss it if we want to do it? Now, what do I do next?
What I would suggest is, you've given the county manager, and the administrator of the agenda, direction and understanding. And absent a policy, which I suggest you develop for the future agenda, he will probably follow it. I mean, I can't talk for him.
I will follow it.
So, you've given him direction now, but we should, I would suggest we establish a written policy, and we'll put that on the agenda.
So, I would like to, to do that, establish a written policy.
Kathy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Next item.
Oh, so, I, so I'm not, I can't just, so, I can't go any further and to have any discussion on this.
But we can, oh, does, you're saying the word is right now, we can't vote on this?
No, no.
Can't do it, okay. So, then we just give.
Right.
No action.
Okay, so we have no action on this.
But you've given direction.
Okay.
So, is it, my understanding then, the way that this agenda request was written is what you want on next time, is that right? Not, not this?
We're just.
The backup material. The backup material is the way that you want it on, is that right, Judy?
No, it's not how, it's not how Kathy wants it on. She wants, she wants it changed a little bit to include the structure and policy and procedures of the administration office.
Well, I think we've got two different things. It sounds like two agenda items to me.
Yes.
Okay, because Judy was taking precedent over the way it was written, and I'm saying that's one of the things that, that our chair wanted on also, right?
Yeah, that's correct, there's two issues at hand. It's the procedural of how we set our agendas and how.
Right.
Agenda requests are, uh, are received, and then the other is working with a consultant to review our policies and procedures,
to make sure that, that everything is structurally, uh, aligned within the, the administration of Lander County.
Correct.
Got it.
So, nothing can be done with this?
No, you, you've done, you've given direction.
Okay.
You've accomplished.
Okay, so, we can do nothing with that, so we're going to move on to correspondence and reports, please?
So, Kathy?
I'm sorry.
No. Can I?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you, um, go ahead, if you have.
For item number eight?
Yes, for.
Okay, so, I guess one of the things, and you mentioned, is future agenda items, that we put it on the agenda to discuss the policies of setting our agendas.
Give me an agenda request of how you want it worded.
Okay. Um, will it?
Go ahead.
Be on the agenda as written? I do have another one.
Okay, so we'll let him, then we'll go back, go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead.
Why don't you see if you can get some of those Colin Powell books from PoolPact, pass them out? I think that it'd be a good read for a lot of people. It worked for me. The NICO purchased three thousand personally signed, and Colin Powell signed every single book. It's really good information. He has rules that he lives by, and he tells you a story of how the rule developed, and it's, we can all relate to it, because he's just a regular guy.
Go ahead. So, and this is just a comment I wanted to make, um, and we get these letters in our mailboxes all the time, and there's, there's never hardly any correspondence in our backup, I mean, in our, our, under that agenda item. And now this one, I'm just using this as an example, because obviously, it was too late to make it into the packet, but, you know, I know there was a time, you know, when Brian was commissioner, you know, they'd have stacks of correspondence, and I'm not done yet, but, um, these are things that need to be in the correspondence for the public. I know sometimes they are, sometimes they're not. But I just want to comment that there's a lot of correspondence, obviously, that's not getting put in our packets.
You get every correspondence that I get, you get a copy in your mailbox, and you get a copy in your commission books. Everything I get, and a, and a file, and one copy goes into a master file. Everything I get gets to you. Either in your mailbox, no, it, yes, it is, get to you.
That's it, that's all you get?
That's what I got. What, what I get for the, the two weeks, I have my, I have Lakin make a copy, put it in your box. She makes another copy, puts it in your books, and another copy in a file.
I have a question, Ted. If we, if there's a correspondence that's given to every single commissioner, is that a broad public issue? Is that something that taxpayers have a right to see, if that correspondence was made to every commissioner?
It, it, it's, it's included in the books, and they have a right to see the books, but it's not an agenda item, so.
No, no, I understand that, but I'm just saying, under, under correspondence and reports, that's what I'm saying, if there was a letter addressed to every commissioner, should it be part of our pack? So, if, if, um, uh, the taxpayers wanted to see that, they have, um, they have access to it.
Well, there's, there's certain correspondence that, that may end up.
As such as a legal nature?
In, yes, of, of a confidential nature, that should not end up in your boxes, but they do.
Anything that could be potentially, uh, litigious would not necessarily be open to.
Right.
Okay, I understand.
Or personnel.
What's that?
If it, if it has anything to do with personnel, it should not be subject to public scrutiny. At that time.
This is not public.
No.
No, that's not, that's not what I was referring to.
I know, I know exactly what you're referring to, I'm pretty sure.
Right.
Is.
But I'll, I'll just talk to you after the.
Yeah. Okay, that might be the best thing, because I would really like to have it on the agenda, if possible, for discussion. Because I do believe it's something that the public needs to be aware of.
So, alright, so anything as far as Keith, correspondence, reports, anything, are we good?
Our, um, uh, we'll have our investigator here, the first meeting in April. He was going to be here this meeting, but I, I thought you were going to be gone.
I know, I was until we had the virus.
Yeah, so anyway, he had to put it off until. Yeah, so anyway, he had to put it off until the first meeting in April, he'll be here for that.
Jim and, Jim and his wife, Foster?
Yes, they're on the, on my board for the next meeting as well, yes.
Are we ready to adjourn?
No, no comment?
Have any public comment?
We'll see y'all next week with the budget.
Yes.
I second. Aye.
Don't forget, don't forget, budget workshop starts next week. Wednesday and Thursday.
Thank you, bye, Austin.